Okay, welcome everybody. Please rise and I'll punch the flag. I applaud you ladies to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone. September 8th, 2014, Village Red Hook Board Meeting. First off, I'd like to thank the Deputy Mayor for running the August meeting. I was on vacation relaxing in somewhere in the US but out of the state, so he takes over. I heard he did a good, very good job, so that's good. And then condolences to Jay Trapp, he couldn't be here. His mother-in-law had passed away, so it was a short meeting that week. Anyway, Brent, would you want to discuss a minute since you're here?
If everyone had a chance to read them, I think we have two sets of minutes, the first one, I think they refer to August 11th.
Right.
Minutes tonight, I go through them and the modern revisions that were made. And then the second one, you want to go through or you won't go through?
I could do those. Because I wasn't here, I just want to make sure everything got pulled into that. So then the second meeting, I was here, it was August 21st. It was a Thursday, our workshop meeting. Fair amount of work, so there's quite a few pages. But I usually ask if there's any additions, alterations, or corrections from the board. Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the monthly August 11th minutes and the workshop minutes of August 21st? Is there a second?
Second.
All favor? Thank you. I thought what we do is, we have some guests here today, we'll put them first and move them on. I think in the audience, we see Judge Treeboster, who I believe has court somewhere else tonight as well. So we'll bump him up out of the order and put him first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. It's always a pleasure and a privilege to appear before you, especially when we're here to talk about our annual court grant. As you may know, Judge Mark and I, since we took the bench in 2007, both in the village and the town, have obtained more than $75,000 worth of grants to support the village and town courts. In fact, everything you see in this room today was paid for by grants at no direct cost to the revenue taxpayer. We're very proud of that. So this year, we are applying for a grant through the Justice Court Assistance Program to pay for a dehumidifier system in the village hall basement where the court records are stored. By law, we are required to keep some of the criminal records for 25 years. And the basement is unfinished, as you know, Mr. Mayor. There is a humidity problem down there. We're concerned about the records being packed by mold, and in that mold, perhaps compromising the health of our very fine village employees. So we're going to be applying for a grant to pay for a sophisticated dehumidifier system so that we don't have to put these records, say, in Iron Mountain at great cost to the taxpayers, keep them right here at home. Now in addition, you know, we have a number of folding chairs in the back for when a lot of people show up either to these meetings or to court, and they're just sort of leaning against the wall. We're going to put in the grant for a cart, allow the chairs to be stored properly, and also transported to other parts of the buildings if need be. Finally, the court docket has increased dramatically since I took the bench. I don't know if that's a cause and effect, Mr. Mayor, but we have more than three times as many traffic cases and twice as many criminal cases today as we did when I took the bench in 2007. And so we need a new filing cabinet. Rather, again, than make that an expense to the village, we're putting that in the grant. You have before you members of the board a resolution which is necessary to be passed to give the court authorization to apply for that grant. And at this time, I'd give that to you for your mature consideration. And I'm also happy to answer any questions that the board or the public may have about the grant or any other aspect of the court administration.
Thank you. Two thoughts. As you mentioned, Judge, the basement is housing records, and we also want to move toward electronic storage of records. And with your newer systems and so forth, are the newer cases headed in that direction or certain always paper, or how does that work out?
Well, paper is a little more secure. And I'll tell you, a lot of the courts were storing things in the cloud. Everyone may have read in the newspaper about certain items that were stored in the cloud by actors and actresses, which are now being distributed widely. Photographs with minimal amount of clothing, shall we say. And my concern is these court records are confidential, especially when it involves a youthful offender. So I would be very reluctant to store records in the cloud, as I said. As for digital storage, certainly the older records, the ones from, say, 15 or 20 years ago, can be stored in that fashion. I checked with the Office of Court Administration. But you would be surprised, Mr. Mayor, how many times we get a phone call throughout the year saying, you know, "I'm in my 50s now, and I made a mistake when I was a teenager, and I need to get a clearance for my new job, so could you dig out my old file and tell them I, you know, I took care of that?" And so we have to go poring through records, and the records are stored alphabetically. It might be a little more difficult to retrieve that if we haven't stored by year digitally. But the Office of Court Administration is looking into this for all the courts. And again, if that is something to do with mass scanning and then storing them on DVDs, that too, we would apply for a grant rather than have local expenditures. But I think this year, what we need to do, the immediate problem, is the paper records in the basement, which are in a damp area. So I think immediately, I would recommend the dehumidifier and the next year, explore the digitalizing of old records.
How long do you have to keep the records accessible?
25 years. Well, the longest period of time for criminal records, 25 years. There's a whole chart. Some are 10 years, some are 15 years, but 25 years for the criminal cases.
Do we have 25 years for the veterans downstairs?
Oh, probably more. Every once in a while, when we do have a spare moment, and that's not too often, my staff goes down there and they figure out what's, what can be purged. We have to get permission, the Office of Court Administration already, and file a document saying, "These are the files we're getting rid of." And then they approve it, and then they get shredded. So it's a whole long process. It's not just saying, "Well, that's more than 25 years old, we can toss it."
So some of us did, upon hearing the issue downstairs and the need for upgrades, we put together a request for some proposals, and we put out a bid, and they turned in last, I think it was a Friday a week ago. So we've got that. What we'll do is, we'll work on this resolution next, but the goal would be to take the lowest bid and give you that number so you can include it in your bid request.
Okay, right.
So it's three things then. It's the dehumidification in the basement area, the file in your...
File cabinet.
And then the third thing was...
And the rack to the chairs table back there.
Okay. So, I don't know, Judge, do you want to read the resolution, or should we have our clerk read it? Do you want to...
Well, it's got a lot of whereabouts to it.
I know.
If I can just get the beaten potatoes off of it.
Sure, that'd be good. And we'll enter it as a resolution, and last for a second, and we'll discuss.
Right. So after all the whereabouts about what the court does and the availability of the grant, we see now therefore be resolved by the Board of the Village of Red Hook County of Duchess, State of New York, that the Village Board authorizes me, the Honorable General Treeboster, Village Justice, to pursue any and all grant applications from the Justice Court Administration Program or any other agency, state organizations, private organizations which may be available for fiscal year 2014, and that would be up to and not to exceed $30,000. And that is after requesting Office of Court Administration, because they capped these grants at $30,000. I don't believe the various things I had mentioned today will come up to $30,000. It's better to have that kind of flexibility and leeway. And therefore, if the Board passes it, Mr. Mayor, you would sign where it says, "A witness whereof, the Village of Red Hook has caused this resolution to be signed by its authorized officer this eighth day of September 2014," and it has to be notarized by Ms. Cole.
Thank you, Judge.
So I'm going to retire to report.
I will not.
The judge read the motion for us. Is there a second for the resolution, rather? A little bit of discussion. Each year, we've had pretty good success with these. It seems like when we apply, there seems to be state money, so it's... Most grants are not a given. We say there's sometimes like buying lottery tickets, but this one's a better shot than most. So what we'll do is, like I said, we did request some proposals, and we have those numbers in our file. Any other discussion from the board?
Is there a resolution number on this one?
Seventeen.
Any other discussion? I think we've heard enough detail, and I'm prepared to vote. All in favor of adopting the resolution so the judge can move forward and get the grant applied for? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye here, so it sounds unanimous. Carrie, thank you, sir.
Thank you. And if you'll excuse me, by a remarkable coincidence, the town board is meeting tonight, and I have a resolution before them for some items in the town court, so I'll have to excuse myself and go down South Broadway to the town court.
Thank you, sir.
All right? And you have the original resolution, Mayor?
I'll sign Cindy's copy here.
Okay, great. And we'll, I'll get on that Thursday in the morning.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Okay, with that done, we'll move to our regular order of business. It's like, Clerk Cole, do you want to give the Treasury Report?
Treasury Report, as of today, September 8th. Account balances, general fund, $586,810.9. Water fund, $79,944.61. Trust and agency, $15,645.23. Materials management, $4,885.9. Petty cash, $59.94. Village green, $3,510.41. Hardscrabble fund, $10,563.12. Health insurance, $5,150.56. And the capital projects, fund balances, $354.2. Monthly expenses, general fund, $108,765.70. Water fund, $9,058.61. Trust and agency, $15,645.23. Materials management, $3,915.8.
Just a couple of questions. Materials management sounds like a little heavy. Was there anyone big building there, or payments or something?
I believe there were some vehicle repairs.
Okay. It's a little more than our normal, it looks like. Is there a motion to accept Treasury Report?
I do have one question then.
Okay.
If we get a memo on August 26th, the county office concerning the sales tax distribution.
Yeah.
From what, from that memo, it's stating that we receive an additional $278 on top of our sales tax revenue projected from that. Do we make any adjustments to our general fund account?
No, because we never know what it's going to be. That's a, that's a guest estimate, 87.5. And that $21,000 was $3,000 less than the last one.
In the first quarter?
Yeah.
What we're talking about here is internally, we get paid, what, quarterly on sales tax?
Yes.
So Brent is right. We did see a memo, I think it was two-fold, they're projecting the impact of the energy sales tax, and then where the economy looks to be going in the county for general sales tax. They were predicting some slight uptick in general, but I don't know that it would be worth adjusting the budget line for that $278 right now. Any other questions? I think Brent had one point, I don't know if we'll talk about it now, but when we buy fuel and snow clearing supplies from the town, we do pay them an administrative fee for their bookkeeping and so forth. We're having some internal discussions with the town because village taxpayers do pay toward the highway department, the building garage, and the admin staff of the town highway department. So we're thinking we may want to, we will want to talk to them and say, "Why has that been going on?" So the gross dollars are not humongous, but still in the spirit of sharing. It goes two ways, so I don't know if you guys have seen any more about that.
Do all the residents in the town, including the two villages, pay toward a fund which is a town budget line? And that fund goes, as I said, to pay for the highway garage, but also administrative staff, for the entire town, like the highway department. We're just curious as to the surcharge that we're getting. It could be valid, but we're just checking into this to be sure that it's the best deal possible.
Because if we could use the 3% ourselves, we'd rather use it ourselves. We'll keep you posted on that.
You didn't go on my Treasury Report.
Okay, I guess we didn't accept. I started to make a motion. Is there a motion to accept the Treasury Report for August, or, let's see, August of 2014?
So.
All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see. I see Patrick out in the audience. Part of my next step is the police report. Would you like to go with that?
Sure. I'll cover a few things, Mayor. Here are a few things going on this month coming up. If you would, you can again prepare for the monthly police report for August 2014. Incidents, 222. UTTs, 83. And arrests are 32. We also have, getting ready with the squad and working with them, we have another parent university coming up, October 24th. You know, last year, we taught cyberbullying and drug awareness in our community. You know, teach parents what to look for, different signs if they have concerns that the kids might be experimenting with any kind of drugs at all. We got great feedback from it, so the school's having us do it again, October 24th, which is coming up. I think we're going to do it twice this year.
Do you know the time on that?
Not yet. I still have to, I have to speak with Donna Gainer.
Okay. Could you let me know, because we were planning on doing the Halloween on that day, and we don't want to interrupt. I think we were doing one to three Halloween? I'm looking at Eddie's...
Oh, I'm looking at you, sorry.
All right.
But I'll find out what time for you on that. We also have, which I've been working on as well, September 26th, we're doing BART Safety Day, and we do DWI awareness and drug awareness as well. We have a booth there. BART College donates their golf cart, and we have DWI goggles. So a lot of college kids are around, they have a free barbecue for them, so it's, it was a great turnout last year. And we teach them, you know, a lot of things to watch out for, walking in the community, obviously, walking on certain roads, and they might not be familiar with, with our area, and just to be, you know what to wear, and, you know, they go, they go through the slot, of course, for the DWI awareness. And last thing is, we had, we just had a big wave, Labor Day crackdown, DWI enforcement. You guys saw the press release and the Freeman at all, but 83 arrests over Labor Day in Duchess County. The Freeman stated that, you know, the majority of the arrests were Route 9 in Town of Red Hook. That was actually at a DWI checkpoint that we were at from midnight to 5:00 AM with the sheriff's office. All checkpoints in Duchess County during the crackdown, they have to be joined, they have to go to two agencies. So we do the sheriff's office down there, and it's very well lit up. We advertise, you know, my big message is, you know, we advertise police crackdowns. They're not a surprise, we're not hiding, big lights, looks like you're at a football stadium, you cannot miss us. And people will still drive through, or they'll drive through, go out, and then come right back through, and they'll be intoxicated, and they know we're sitting there. So be, be smart. You know, my message is, you know, be smart about drinking and driving, we're out there. All agencies are. We used to arrest a gentleman a couple of days ago. Started doing burnouts with a car down here, he got DWI, lost control, and almost hit two 16-year-old girls. Witness statements to it, at the Hannaford light, knock on wood. You know, he just missed him, so beware. That was, I'm sorry, you want to make comment on some of the other things?
Yeah, two things. One was on the Freeman story, the 83, of course, there weren't 83 in Red Hook.
No, across Duchess County.
I can hear, I see four and two in our past...
Yeah, they, we have, they, that's across Duchess County. That's Town of Kipsey, City of Kipsey, High Park, you know, the state police as well, sheriff's office, all agencies of Duchess County, it's across the whole county. Want me to elaborate on the arrests?
Arrests?
Yeah, so the arrests this high, obviously, for those of you to keep track, is 32, which is, which is a high number. It was a busy month. We had, kind of going through the report and making my notes today, you know, we had, we had a few burglaries, we had multiple heroin arrests, we had a few arrests of crack, distributing, selling painkillers, we had arrests for grand larsns, pet larsns, DWI, bad checks, trespassing, physical verbal harassments, kind of all those, and a few more. But you get multiple of those arrests out, and they add up. So that was this month for us.
It looks like it broke down, actually, more were in the town.
Twelve were in the village and 20 were in the town. And, I mean, this Saturday alone, you know, on the town patrol, we were busy. You know, that incident, I handed for drivers on Saturday night on town patrol. We had multiple accidents, two or three warrant arrests, so. That's my report. Any questions?
I'm good. Anybody else on the board? Thank you, Patrick.
Thank you, Mayor.
Let's see, looks like roll number, number three is Mr. Trapp.
Yes, sir.
I'm kind of impressed. Looks like the new Municity program is generating some new-looking reports to us here.
Yes, indeed. Format is a little frenzied, I think.
Yeah.
So we have some, some new equipment coming down, and some new report formats that are, that are being provided by a nice grant that we've gotten through the county, right through the county. And Sam has some new equipment that he's probably working to, to get grips with, but it looks like we're moving forward with this. We had, in August of 2014, we had $969.50 taken in at the building department, and this was all building department as opposed to, sometimes there are water fees included in here. And in the midst of this, he issued, and it tends to slow up a little bit around this time, five building permits were issued, he issued four certificates of occupancy, three certificates of compliance, he conducted one municipal search, and conducted nine inspections. And now we have, actually, the inspections are printed out in a better report format, and it's a little easier to kind of follow through what he's done, and tells us whether they're final inspections, framing, whatever, insulation inspections, and so forth. And the planning board has looked like they were relatively busy in August. They had quite a number of items in front of them, extension of subdivisions, minor subdivisions, and so that's good to hear. We're doing a little bit of work in the village here. A number of sign applications were approved, which means new business is coming in, which is a good thing. Let's see, watertight plumbing, very nice. And Ed, Ed and I speak almost every morning. It's a, I'm sure he knows who's calling it like 7:10 every morning. It must be just lovely to hear from me every morning, I can't... But I keep him honest. We, we chat, we, we're, we're working through some issues. We're still, you know, following some people in the village who are skirting codes, and whether they be village zoning codes or New York State building codes, we're still chasing a few people here and there. And it is an extended process, takes a little bit of time to move through, but Sam's been pretty diligent, and also Gary Beck has been assisting us on, on some issues. We use an alternate from time to time. And the other item is this week, Thursday evening, Duchess County Planning Federation is putting forward the three short courses at Millbrook at the Farm and Home Center, and it's going to be historic preservation, signage, and case law update. We're going to have a DOS attorney come down, going to answer some questions for everybody that's there. We're hoping, we, at last check, we had almost 90 people signed up, so we should have very good attendance. It'll be, I think it'll be a very nice presentation. It's three classes for the price of two. You get, you know, you get a little food, you get a little drink, and you get, then you get dinner after. You have to wait for the dinner, though. We can't feed everybody right away. Everybody leave, and we either fall asleep by 9:00, so we kind of hold that to the end. And in October, we have another short course coming up. It's Streams 101. It's going to be an interesting class. There's a lady who's going to teach it. She's very passionate about stormwater and streams in New York State, so it should be very nice. We'll catch up with block grants, right, Ed? We'll catch up to that later down. Okay, so I'll save that for later then. Thanks.
So Streams 101, what is that?
It's, it's, you know, identification of streams, what you should do when you have development around them, how to protect them, stream rehab. It, it's not going to be too terribly detailed because it, it's not a typical planning board subject, you know? Things like that, when they come up in front of the planning board, they're usually referred to an engineer or somebody else. But it's to give the planning boards an overview and education about what they need to do, who they need to refer things to, so that they have a sense of, of the mechanics when faced with something like that. We don't have lots of issues like that in the village, but it, nevertheless, it's good to know these things.
Yeah, two things to follow up on what Jay said. The planning board has requirements to make training hours per year, so we're happy that our guys go. And I think this month's meeting is actually being delayed so the board can go to the training. Is that correct, Jay?
That's, that's my understanding. Yeah, it's on Thursday evening.
Yeah, it's not a haphazard switch, and any applicants in front of the board are advised that their meeting is being switched. So it's not like people are showing up and wondering, "How come my planning board's not here to hear my case?"
Correct, Ed. We need to educate our people. We need to educate all the people.
Right, so I think there's a sign right now in the back entrance and probably in the front somewhere saying it's been switched. So if you're out there and you're wondering why it's not happening this week, sometimes the reporters come to that, I know, so.
Yeah, well, it's also the same day as the town plan.
Okay. Thank you, Jay.
You bet.
I guess one thing, Jay, you and I were talking, when Jay was mentioning the new grant, we're on this software program written by a company right here in Red Hook, it's called Municity. It's more high-tech and field-based, and our building inspector has an iPad type, not like an Android-based, but it's a pad computing system. And right now, Steve had to leave the building. He's our telephone consultant, but we can hold a question for him. He had to leave, his wife had knee surgery. We're having different medical events up here on the board, but she's in need of some phone call, and he indicated to me he might have to step out for a minute to talk to her. He's not ignoring us or being aggravated. He had to do something. So when he comes back, maybe we could just ask, where I was headed is, this new field-based equipment uploads when he comes back automatically. When he comes back in the office, all his data uploads, but doesn't upload from the field because we don't have a subscription out there. And we're not certain, and we don't think we want to buy a separate, another data subscription. So we could talk about when Steve comes back with facilities.
And so what Ed's saluting to is this, our building inspector takes this, this tablet out into the field, records the information of whether it's the inspections or whatever. He takes pictures with the tablet, and then he comes back, and everything is uploaded into the system, and kind of populates this, this format of this new software. So it's, and it's directly connected to Duchess County, so that everybody kind of knows everything at one time.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, we'll let Steve take his break out there, and Jennifer Nars, would you like to go next?
Sure, sure, sure. Materials management, for the month of August, we sold $2,790.50 in tags. Ooh, and paid out. I apologize. I did not, I did not proofread my report. We paid out $1,055.82. We had 9.58 tons of garbage and 5.94 tons of single-stream recycling. The library report, I didn't get their numbers in time for today's spiel, but I do want to give them props. The Red Hook team took first place in the 10th Annual Battle of the Books, which was held over the weekend. Area libraries get together, and it's like a quiz show thing, and their team came in first, so.
How old are those kids?
They're like middle school age, like sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so very proud of them. And now events coming up. I'm going to work backwards. How about that? We'll go far out and go back, see if we can end Hardscrabble Day. Village Tively holds... Village Tively holds their annual street painting festival Saturday, October 4th. It's one of my favorite events, I know it's not ours, but it's a great event, so make sure you hit that. This is brand spanking new, I just found the flyer in the hallway. It's Red Hook's Apple Harvest Festival, this is, the merchants group is starting this, so what todoinredhook.com. There's gonna be an apple pie baking contest, apple pie eating contest, apple bobbing, apple skateboarding race, apple dunk booth, apple drinks and desserts. That's gonna be on Saturday, October 5th, starting at noon. So this is, I'm kind of excited, this is kinda cool and unique and I'm all for people starting stuff, lots, lots of apples, says it right here. So we'll see how that goes, it's Sunday, October 5th, starting at noon. The annual Catch a Ray 5K run, walk and fun run will be Sunday, September 21st, at nine AM at the Red Hook High School, with registration starting at seven AM. For online registration and more information, go to CatchaRay and it's, Ray is spelled R-A-E dot org. And finally, it's Hard Scrabble Day in less than two weeks. Saturday, September 20th, it's a rain or shine event, we have our website, hardscrabbleday.org. We do have a couple more spaces for some vendors, vendor application can be found on the website. Our headliner is Greg Rowley, he is a Rock and Roll Hall of Famer, founding member of Santana and Journey, should be a great concert. The parade's gonna be at four thirty, we're going to have kids' events at the Key Bank Lawn from eleven to three, including a bounce house. That's gonna be free of charge for the kids, the kids can come and bounce. We're going to have a clothing swap as we did last year. Vendors, food.
Parade.
Parade, I said that, parade at four thirty. What else we got? Music all day, vendors all day, food all day, we're exhausted all day, I don't know what else to say.
You got it.
Okay, so there, so it's, it should be great.
It will be great.
It will be great, it's gonna rock.
I'll segue into it, look at our audience, I see people about my age, kinda gray hair everywhere and so we'll, Patrick does it, we'll get a little bit of it. But it's our understanding that Greg Rowley, we're trying to promote the link, he definitely is a co-founder of the band Santana and Journey. He's going to do primarily a lot of Santana stuff, which he wrote one of the songs you know, like, you know, Black Magic Woman, the ways. What he does when he starts to set apparently, he comes out like that, and it's just, I think it's gonna be pretty awesome for Red Hook to do that. Again, we've had some good luck attracting these world-class musicians and gives us a little leg up on, you know, center clause is nice, but Rock and Roll's a little better, I don't know. But anyway, I see actually, you know, things are coming together well. What we're trying to do this year is with the food booths, promote some more local food suppliers from our own warehouse of local folks like Rusty's and Carl Beach. What's it, American, what's he called?
Great Food and Company. Oh, we also have our Indiegogo crowdfunding.
Yeah, that's a big thing, I don't know how many folks are watching Panda and you in the audience, but last year we did it, it's called crowdfunding. It's where we put up a link on the internet and we actually can appeal to Red Hook alum if they're in Portland, Oregon or Poughkeepsie, New York, wherever. They theoretically can get into the Indiegogo under Hard Scrabble Community site and you can donate ten dollars, five dollars, five thousand dollars. So if we have any rich alums or ex-part students who wanna promote Red Hook, we're actually reaching out to some local folks that run big magazines and things to see if they wanna sponsor. The secret to our success with Hard Scrabble Day is we leverage a little bit of local money, meaning village Red Hook money, and we go out for sponsors. And this year we have, you'll see it in a day or two, sponsors that come in, but they throw in serious money. We don't look to the donation budget, we look to their advertising budget. We actually give them radio time, we give them print time, we give them stage mentions and banner presence, trying to link the nature of their business with a community event. And we're also promoting, and you'll see a piece I wrote, a lot of us here talk about the theory of complete streets and public spaces. We're trying to promote that fact that the streets are our stage and we, we don't have a great big auditorium anywhere to do shows with, so we have to take a hedge on the weather, spend a lot of money on bands. And we put it outside, and, but that is our thought, it is, the community needs and wants a place to celebrate. And where we have the venue is the street, and so that's, that's the operating motif this year, complete streets world. And like we said, we knock on wood for the weather, that's our biggest thing, fundraising's coming together well. Jen usually paints her toenails, what color?
I paint them red, and this, this year I'm actually working with a nail affair across the street, she's a local woman. I'm getting a special Red Hook red pedicure, she's gonna paint little hooks on my toes. And anyone is welcome to join me and, and get little.
All of the trustees?
You wanna? That could be the cover of the newspaper, all our toes.
Yeah, that'd be a good press, press release. And then our Teflon County Executive, he tends to try to take credit when the weather's great. He also helps sponsor the event with some money, but somehow he dodges the bullet if we get thunderstorms and rain. And I'm always the one that gets wet and dirty when it's raining and he takes the credit, but anyway, we thank him and the county and all the folks that have sponsored. While we're in that regard, I thought what we normally do in our budget each year, we budget for community-wide celebrations, four thousand dollars. And we use two thousand of that for the Hard Scrabble Day. And like we said, it is the seed money that gets us the basic thing going and then we pitch it out. And, you know, this year for the record, we've got banks like Rhinebeck Bank and Hudson Valley Federal Credit Union throwing up serious money to be a presence. And then we have a lot of other businesses that are smaller, the Baywright family comes through with all their multiple businesses a few times. But we do leverage that two thousand into serious money and then we help with that big increment of money. We then run our, what I call our baby events, our Red Hook Halloween, our Winter Fest, our Egg Scramble. And if we ever get energized enough to try another February, like a Valentine, something, we always talk about it, but it's, we don't have a cold winter venue. The complete streets work when it's between fifty-five degrees and eighty-five, but when it's five degrees or zero in February, we don't wanna do a street festival, but, so we, but anyway. I thought while we're on celebrations, I'd like to put an motion just to switch the two thousand dollars from the celebrations line to the Hard Scrabble fund. Is there a second on that?
A second.
Any discussion? One favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, I hope they can, so voted. Let's see, Mr. Darkchuck isn't back, maybe I could jump in with his piece, he may have had to leave the building. We're working Steve into the water operations world here. What we have is a report from our operator, the water treatment plant treated seven point three nine nine million gallons for daily average of two hundred thirty-nine gallons per day. The prior year, what we do is we compare current year, prior year, we treated seven point three eight seven million gallons, that's pretty close to the same. It's a daily average of two hundred thirty-eight thousand gallons per day, so it's a thousand gallons per day difference, so no, no big swing that from August to August. And, I don't know, this typo or not, this is in August of 2004, seven point four three zero million gallons for an average of two hundred and forty thousand gallons per day. This comes from our operator, I'm not sure why they picked.
Maybe just comparing?
Point in time ten years ago, but maybe.
It should've been 2014.
Nah, that's the current year, but anyway. The story is, it looks like it's a ten-year sample, but it's two hundred thirty-eight thousand, two hundred thirty-nine thousand, two hundred forty thousand gallons, so it's holding pretty steady. We normally send two bacteria samples each month and that was done, they were sent to Smith Labs and both returned with negative result for coliform. Oh, we weren't sure where you were Steve, so we jumped in. We explained to the audience that you have some family issues with the health.
Thank you.
Nothing, I guess, monstrously serious, but enough, we gotta be diverted. What we did, Steve, while you were gone, we were talking about with our building department and the new, new software, where we have the tablet taken in the field. We wanted to get your expertise from the facilities and telephone world. Right now, we understand, as soon as the inspector comes in the building, the data uploads off our in-house wireless. It doesn't work in the field that way, but the software vendor tells me when he comes in, that does happen. And as much as it doesn't sign a lot of money, a set of data packages, X dollars a month, times twelve months, times numbers of years, we're thinking we'd prefer to have him come in here. Do you have any thoughts on that, in other words, usually what, data packages are forty, fifty, sixty dollars a month, or?
Uh, it's just gonna be a straight data pack.
Yeah.
No voice.
Yeah, no phone.
Uh, I would need to check, it would be with Verizon Wireless, so I just need to check with them.
Yeah, 'cause our thinking, if you wanted to check, we don't have to vote out tonight or anything, it's just, is, do we need it? Cause as people know the village, it's not like he's eight miles away, an inspection has to come back to upload it's, we're all pretty close.
Right.
Where he has to go, so we'd be inclined to try to not have to spend it if we could. And let's see, we read your, the water report. Do you have your thoughts together, do you wanna talk about anything while you came back in, or with regard to water or facilities? I do know, well, what's your thing for a minute, but you and I have been working on the snow and ice dam situation. We get on a roof and we did get some bids and you were, you were vetting the contractor and I think you were about where you wanted to be on that.
Yeah.
We would like to authorize the contractors start work. It's, for those that don't know, every year we get too much snow on the roof, meaning when we get the big snowfalls. It's, we get an ice damming and we, I think every other year we've had a little bit of water damage. We've been looking at the source, and this year we finally think we've found the source, and it means taking some shingles off, working on some of the sheeting, doing certain things. And then fortunately we have the high-end shingles and storage in a basement from the first build project seven years ago. So we'll just splice them in, and it's in a spot where you can't see much anyway, so it's not like we'll look ugly from the street.
Right.
So, but while it's still warm enough for shingles to bend and get nailed, we'd like to go ahead and do that.
Yes, I'd like to see them getting them in there as soon as possible.
Do you wanna call him or you want me to call him, you on the road next day or two?
No, I can call him.
Okay, okay.
Who is it?
SAP is called. We've got an estimate from, and it's small, it's not monster money, but it's, Steve has, Steve has all the info. It's way less than ten thousand dollars is what I mean, so. And we did budget some money for that in the budget season, cause we knew we had the problem, I think, so it's, it's not like we're robbing a budget line for it. I saw a hand raised, but generally we wait for public comment at a certain point in the meeting. Oh, roof, I thought you were reading, it's actually where the old building meets the new building. You got a question without me letting you. Anyway, okay, anything else on facilities while we're?
So they are initiating the police department's all good?
Yeah, it was, we had a cool summer, but it got warm in the end and one of our compressors outside had something go down on it. And, yeah, it sounds like, did they get it fixed, Patrick? Cause the poor PD guys, they're wearing heavy clothes and bulletproof vests, so they're more susceptible, plus they're a little more active than the rest of us, so. Internal labor stress for a while there was on. Okay, I think we got through, but with the Deputy Mayor Kovalchek, are you ready to go?
Yep. Now, it's time for the village green month report, current balances of the village green meeting related budget accounts, response files, community gratification. We have three thousand five hundred and eleven dollars and zero and two cents shade tree contractual, we have nine thousand dollars. And the village green committee checking account is two thousand five hundred and ten dollars and forty dollars. Is that number for our fellow community gratification? We'll check that, we'll verify that, cause we did get some money in from insurance, like this month, so maybe next month will be adjusted.
Well, that was just changed today, so yeah, got five hundred dollars more.
And there were no village green meetings held during the month of August. There are tree care LLC was awarded contract to remove and or approve existing trees located in village street right of ways. Work is anticipated to be complete by September 12th, 2014. This tree includes a total of fifteen trees that the village green committee has looked at and also here in question, we did have a progress look at that. An estimated cost of four thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars will be deducted from the general fund, shade tree contractual expenses. And I gave a list of the trees on last month's report, if you're interested, it should be posted on our website. Two new bench dedication plaques will purchase in order in August. Six locations remain without dedication plaques, we need to start a total of twenty-three benches and six left. And village residents can purchase a bench dedication plaque that says in honor of, in memory of, dedicated by, et cetera, for a hundred and twenty-five dollars. Proceeds from the sale of plaques will be deposited in the dedicated village green checking account. It will be used to purchase the plaques and pay for the installation. The remaining funds of the fee will be used for future village and community enhancement projects. People interested can contact village clerk's office at seven five eight ten eighty-one for more information. On to the highway department, the village highway department is currently picking up laundry and brush. And this happens every first and third Monday of the month. Residents are reminded to place laundry and brush curbside and please limit the size of the brush piles to six feet by six feet by six feet. With trim, with tree limbs and branches no longer than eight inches in diameter. And please do not include tree trunks and debris from tree maintenance, or by private contractors, they are obligated to remove that at this cost. A contract was awarded to Frank Bosberg from Spal on August 11th for catch basin and culvert repair of three locations in the village. Eighteen thousand two hundred and eighty dollar ameliorer services from Frank Bosberg. Plus materials supplied by the village will be deducted from the CHIPS allocation, that's the consolidated highway improvement program. And also a minor of street repair, including repairs to the hairpin turn on Cherry Street will be made during the time of catch basin culvert repair. Our women cherry will have been ordered and on-site. The cost of these additional street repairs will be deducted from the general fund account, maintenance of streets, street maintenance appropriation. And I thank George for bringing Cherry Street to our attention last week. We anticipate this to be done by the end of September. American Underground Services of Burns Hills, New York was awarded the contract to provide high-pressure water jet cleaning and vacuum debris from some of the village's existing catch basins and culverts. This is the third phase of the catch basin culvert cleaning program. Each year, one phase will be completed with a three-year rotation schedule. This phase, this year's phase will primarily be conducted on catch basins and culverts in Rite of Estates, Rite of Commons, the northeast and the southeast village quadrants, but also the village parking lot. And the approximately three-day project at a cost of one thousand four hundred dollars per eight-hour day will be deducted from the maintenance of streets, catch basin culvert appropriations, and we expect this to be done end of September as well. So September, very busy month for the highway department. The village, again, is fairly identified, catalogued and marketed, village own tools and equipment for inventory and insurance purposes. And scrap metal was sold on June 3rd and the check was received on August 13th for the amount of five hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Total revenue generated for this fiscal year is five hundred and forty-four dollars and fifty-three cents. Since inception, scrap metal recycling program in September of 2007, seventeen thousand dollars and seventy cents has been generated. Proceeds from this program go toward torches, tools and equipment for the village highway, water and material management departments. Residents and businesses interested in donating scrap metal can contact highway department at seven five eight eight six hundred or the village clerk's office at seven five eight ten eighty-one. And the highway department will assist property owners by picking up the scrap metal economy cost. The Rite of Intermodal Pass Force and the Rite of Infrastructure Monthly Report, the Rite of Sewer Project. Water samples were collected on August 4th, 6th and 15th and sent to Smith Laboratory for testing. A total of six samplings and tests have occurred since June 25th, 2014. Eleven sites have been located to monitor and test subsurface water quality. And an additional three sites have also been located to monitor and test water quality, surface water quality in the village. The subsurface water samples are being tested for fecal coliform, nitrates, caffeine and ammonia concentrations. The purpose of the test is to determine what, if any, effects improperly sized and/or failing sensible wastewater treatment systems have on the village's drinking water supply. And data from these tests have been and will be, and will continue to be included in the engineering report as prepared by the CTMIL, CTMIL associates. And have been and will continue, again, submitted for evaluation scoring by the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. Scoring results determine the ranking and pride. Scoring results, uh, determine the ranking and pride and priority of a particular water, clean water versus wastewater project proposal in New York State. Or major capital funding eligibility and opportunities that's listed on the New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation intended use plan. A draft engineer report, uh, how Reddick wastewater study, village of Reddick, Texas County, New York was submitted to the New York State EFC on August twenty-ninth. Additional water quality tests and minor revisions will also be submitted during the month of September. An application and project listing form for the Clean Water State Revolving Fund was signed by Mayor Blundell. Submitted to the New York State EFC on August twenty-ninth as well. Conversations with EFC and USDA regarding potential funding opportunities according to the sewer district ownership and the village's household made an income have been initiated. Uh, funding for the water quality study and the engineering report has been provided by a thirty thousand dollar New York State BEC. And New York State EFC planning, engineering planning grant award. Reddick water projects seems to be taking up a lot of our time, um, which is a good thing. Reddick Village Water Project Phase One, a meeting was held on August eighteenth at the Highland New York offices of USDA. Both Ed and I attended with USDA. The hall of closeout documents were reviewed and discussed. Initial and already documented, these submitted to USDA from bond council, legal council, Trinity Construction, CT Mail. The village of Reddick and New York State Environmental Facilities Corporation. The approximately one point two million short-term financing from EFC will be rolled into the USDA rural development long-term financing package at a rate of two percent for a term of thirty-eight years. The funding has been provided for well improvements and new water customer meters. A pre-closing meeting and conference call has been scheduled for September twenty-second. The final closing scheduled for September twenty-fourth. Uh, the Reddick Village Water Project Phase Two, a meeting was held on August eighteenth, again at the Highland offices. Uh, to review the funding applications and documents, uh, based on a letter of conditions, uh, were reviewed. A letter was received from USDA on August twelfth notifying the village that they've been approved, we've been approved for the three point eight billion dollars loan at a rate of three point two five percent for a thirty-eight year term. Uh, Phase Two will be used for replacement of water mains in the southwest quadrant and a new water storage tank at the Firehouse Lane Water Well Field Site. Uh, the period for submission of a petition regarding the bond resolution expired on August twenty-ninth. Um, this is for the bond resolution, three point eight billion dollars and the appropriate forms have been signed and processed for USDA submission. Uh, third water project of two thousand thirteen, community development block grant. A notice of award letter was sent to Trinity Construction on August twenty-sixth. A hundred sixty-eight thousand seven hundred eighty-three dollar project cost will be for the installation of a new well in the red well number fifteen at the Firehouse Lane Well Field Site. Hundred fifty thousand dollars of the project cost will be reimbursed with two thousand thirteen community development block grant award and short-term financing. Um, actually the short-term financing and construction and engineering costs in excess of a hundred fifty thousand dollars will be financed with the line of credit. At one point three five percent interest from Salisbury Bank and we passed, the village board passed a resolution approving this on the August eleventh meeting. A pre-construction meeting has been scheduled with Texas County Department of Planning and Development, Trinity Construction, CT Mail and the village Reddick. For September ninth is tomorrow, so we're heading down to Poughkeepsie for that meeting. Um, two thousand fifteen community development block grant, which I think we'll go into more detail, but then we'll discuss that right now and actually due to the village's high meeting household income, which exceeds the low mod criteria. Projects involving handicap accessibility would be considered. Um, and again, we'll talk more about that. In the Intermunicipal Task Force, the task force met on August eighth, fifteenth, twenty-second and twenty-ninth. Rural road widths and traditional neighborhood district road widths and specifications were reviewed and discussed. Task force agreed to the following TND street widths. Um, it still has to be approved by the town board. Twenty-four foot street with parking on one side only for two-way traffic. A twenty-foot street with no parking allowed for two-way traffic. An eighteen-foot wide street with parking on one side for one-way traffic and a fifteen-foot street with no parking allowed for one-way traffic. Are the four different options. All TND streets will have a ten-foot minimum to fifteen-foot maximum corner radius with five-foot sidewalks and six-foot wide tree lawns on both sides of the street. Turbing if provided will be of concrete or granite and the right of ways will be fifty feet with allowances for front porch steps, lawns and landscaped right-of-way encroachment. And allowances for a forty-foot long curb indentation, twenty-six minimum width will be included in front of fire protection. Water fire hydrants, as per New York State Fire Code, if they do, in fact, they have, uh, fire protection at the TNDs. And a final review or approval by the Reddick Town Board is anticipated in September two thousand fourteen.
So were those numbers only applied to apply to town projects?
Assistant town, regional district, places located south of the village, southern border of the village and. So actually there's, there's one development being proposed right now. I have the five hundred and two unit residential subdivision. Uh, the Reddick Town Economic Development Committee, both Ed and I are village days on. Um, the EDC meeting was held on August thirteenth in the Reddick Village Building. Uh, we discussed Reddick in the Hudson Valley, the events calendar, which they view. Training exercises sessions are currently being scheduled for businesses, civic groups, cultural organizations, educational institutions, the city, the city council and the community calendar. Businesses and groups interested in posting their vet listings on the calendar can contact the EDC at calendar calendared info.
I think it's info RH, my guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, info RH, info RH, G at gmail dot com to receive a username, password and schedule a brief training. Um, this website can be accessible on our, I guess, our website as well. The Community Preservation Fund and Farm Land Protection Advisory Committee, which I'm a member of, there were no meetings held during the month of August. Also no meetings from the Town of Reddick zoning review committee, which I sit on. Uh, the Town of Reddick Villages, the Reddick and Tivoli Shared Services Committee. Um, for August, a meeting was held on August twenty-sixth. A meeting was held with, uh, Roundback Construction and Dan Strad Street and Ed and I on August twenty-sixth. The Reddick Village Building reviewed and revised the Reddick Village's, Village's data and information as indicated in the July twenty-third analysis of existing conditions, department structure and services interim report. The meeting was held on the twenty-seventh, the next day at the Reddick Town Hall, uh, with the Town of Reddick. And we discussed and reviewed the existing conditions analysis and discussed remaining steps for the completion. Review the preliminary feasibility study of option and alternatives regarding options for shared services identified and options evaluations. Again, this is for the highway and shared services. Review the next step regarding existing conditions analysis revisions in the next public meeting. Scheduled, we also scheduled tentative dates of either September twenty-ninth or thirtieth, I believe, or shooting for the twenty-ninth. At seven thirty PM at the village. Reddick Village Building, a possible public meeting to discuss with the community municipalities, the shared services. Highway report, which we're really doing. So we'll confirm that a little later, but right now we're again, tentative for September twenty-ninth. I think this is Thursday, right?
Probably the day of the week. You have a calendar under you, Steve?
Maybe I'll get it now.
What day is the twenty-ninth?
Oh, September?
Yeah.
That's a monkey.
Reddick Together, there were no Reddick Together meetings held during the month of August. And Library is transforming communities, the Public Innovators Cohort, which I'm a member of, representing the village board. Um, the library is currently conducting a series of exercises with Reddick Village residents. Civic groups, cultural organizations and special interest groups. These exercises will continue over the next thirteen months. Uh, we have an eighteen-month period with a period of one to five months to help determine what kind of community needs to be eliminated and the rates of comments regarding what actions need to happen to foster a more engaged community. Over thirty ask exercises involving individuals, six aspiration exercises with groups and three community conversations involving over a hundred and fifty people have been conducted. Uh, community conversation, the latest one was conducted at the Reddick Library on August eighteenth. That was conducted by Olivia Eschenbach Smith, an intern from Bard College and Erica Feudenberger, the director of the library. The Reddick Library is one of ten libraries nationwide to receive a grant from the American Libraries Association with sponsorship from the village of the Gates Foundation. The LTC is an AIA initiative that addresses the critical need in the library field by developing and distributing new tools, resources and support for libraries to engage with their communities in new ways. These will result in stronger roles for libraries to become more reflective of how they're connected to their communities and build stronger partnerships with civic agencies, nonprofits, funders and corporations. Uh, members of the Reddick Public Innovators Cohort include Erica Feudenberger and Shelley Eric from the library, Eric Canan, associate director of the Bard College Center for Civic Engagement. Jay McLaughlin, who's the former New York State Regional Parks Director. Olivia Eschenbach Smith, being an intern from the Environmental Urban Studies Program at Bard College and myself. So we'll be around for a while and hopefully put some of this information down and share it all with all the groups and innovators that we in contact, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Brent. Just, um, he goes through a lot of stuff there, but one thing I said would be cross-reference between EDC and Reddick Together, but ten days ago or so Brent and I took a PowerPoint show to Bard. They have, when they come back with their school group, uh, they call it welcoming back day where students get their keys and they get their parking permits and I built a slideshow which takes them from a shuttle bus stop through all the businesses and the good news is we update slideshow each year. And this year there was a lot of new businesses that we had to throw in and a lot of them are really unique and pretty creative. It's a little changeover in the street scene out there and not sure how much the kids get it the first day, we call them kids, they're a lot younger than us, but, um, it gives them a sense that they're welcome here and that when we sit and watch fifteen or thirty get on and off the bus each hour or two out here, it's, they're coming back with shopping bags and different things full of things they bought and different things they need to get from the village and they do bring an energy level to the village, which we like to see at the streets and so forth. But, uh, it's kind of a fun event and they, uh, they appreciate it. Usually we do something later with the judge and sometimes the PD. Where we try to isolate out the folks that actually live in the village, the Bard students that live in the village. Give them a little in-house protocol on rules and regulations ranging from garbage to noise to whatever and, uh, we like to say we get the quieter, more academic Bard students, whereas we avoid the, the Tivoli crush sometimes and, uh, quite sure how we do it, but some of us, because we, uh, we lean on them a little bit and they, uh, they know the rules. But it's, uh, we do get anecdotal information too. We sell garbage tags through the health food store on the weekends and sales tail, tail off a little bit in the summer over there and all of a sudden bam, Michael's been in here.
Three times.
He bought like a hundred tags in one weekend, just like the first weekend I were back, so it's, um, it's good they use our system instead of going out to the private haulers. It's good stuff. It's pretty exciting to have them back. Anyway, um, I guess we could segue. In our regular business, we dealt with the court grants, so we could run to, I don't know, to two thousand fifteen block grant. We've been brainstorming it at some of our regular meetings and some of our workshops. We may have a consensus, but we should formally discuss a little bit here. As Brent was saying in his report, that we're not sure exactly how, but Reddick is starting to show the wealthier village than before, which makes it harder to get block grant money. Um, but we still are eligible for things that could be deemed to affect ADA compliance, American Disability Act compliance. And we're taking that to be including sidewalks, especially since we have a gap in our southern line of sidewalks in front of the culvert and laundry mat where we have sidewalk that disappears and it picks up at the town level. Clearly an ADA restrictive event in my mind. And then we're talking about making an arrangement with the Reddick Fire Department to, um, give them some parking and some options over there so they can be more ADA accessible and have just more parking in general, but there is an ADA component to that. So we're thinking of stringing our sidewalks and maybe curb cuts or whatever down that way. We've had our engineers looking at some options in the field, like Brent said. We don't get, or maybe it was Jay in his report said, um, we don't get the full a hundred fifty thousand dollars access anymore. What'd you say, Jen? Jay, it's a hundred thousand dollars?
A hundred.
Yeah. Yeah, so, um, and then, so we have the engineers out, but we tasked everybody to do some creative thinking. I know a few of us were thinking of some solar applications, but not sure that that dovetails with the current ADA restriction on the block grant world, so.
Probably we could do that is if we did an income study, income survey of the area, so it, and it results of the survey came in under the low mod criteria, then we can make that application, but that's a lengthy process.
Yeah. What you're hearing is some policy won't talk up here. Low mod means the, uh, that's the, the income level that you have to have a low mod to qualify for the full hundred fifty thousand full-range block grant capacities. We're, like I said earlier, we're not quite in agreement with the federal census that our population became that much more affluent in the past ten years. We don't really see it necessarily across the spectrum, but I mean, it's changing, but they're showing what we increased twenty thousand dollars per household income in ten years and that's not too clear to us. Where that is, but, uh, I mean, we know we're going this way, but that seems like a big, big jump. But like you said, we identify those sidewalk type projects. Our, our timeline is we have to have something to the county block grant people by the end of October. We generally have a public hearing just to further identify it, which would probably dovetail our sequence with our October meeting. It sounds like that would work from what you guys in the planning world deal with. So tonight, thought we'd just try to firm up where we're at. Does anybody else come up with any ideas that would be related? I know our building with the construction seven years ago brought the building into good compliance. You know, sometimes we talk about with our street festivals, but the ADA requirements there are really, we have to take all reasonable steps to maintain access, but it's really nothing we have to construct that I can see. We bring in portable toilets, we have, um, signs, we do different things, but there's nothing we could really construct outdoors that would change anything much. So I'm inclined to go with sidewalk concept. I think that culvert gap is nagging, you know, it's for everybody out there. The town also applied for a grant, which I'm not as convinced they'll get, but we dovetailed on that to see if they got it. We would try to get that built through that grant. But, um, I think historically block grants have been better success rate for us. We, we tend to get them. What I did, we, I reached out to the senior complex, meaning Reddick Commons and developed a little, I'll say a petition of sorts that we could use to supplement our application where we could say that that break in the sidewalk is problematic for them to make it more easily defined as an ADA issue.
Next thing is the link on, on the west side of nine, the south of the village and there is a town section of that sidewalk that goes down to Hanford, but I think that, so there's that one little piece right there that's missing and
Yeah.
If you do have any money left over, I'd like to consider also trying to get as much firehouse lane done. Please go down in front of the firehouse so people have handicap accessibility for the parking lot without going onto the street and then back into the alley.
Yeah, that's what I was alluding to with the firehouse lane piece. And then if we had some money, we know we've got DOT compliant pedestrian crosswalks from Prince Freely and further down by Reddick Commons, but the New York driver being what they are, we're still in peril, especially when you try to exercise the pedestrians right on the two southern, southern, southerly most ones. Um, this one cars are slowed enough and they are thinking more pedestrian one here, so you have a, maybe a fifty percent chance of being allowed to cross. But down here you probably have a ten percent chance. So it's, but the problem down there, like we might've said at some meetings is at Freely in particular, it's real narrow and it's hard to put something in the middle of the road there with turning, traffic and different things and further down, but we'd like to, if we can in the block grant, see what we could fund or have the engineers or somebody because the road, like you said, in the shoulders, they're signed for the, the proper way, but the cars still don't respond. And, um, at our workshop, Jay had brought up, he was reading in the Freeman, that Sargides recently did a, um, recently did a decoy project where, and we have Patrick in the room, not sure how we do it, but what that was, they didn't issue tickets, but they put observers and then an enforcement car down the road where they would tell folks, hey, you're supposed to yield to pedestrians. And then, but the one logistical thing I had is, the cars might end up causing more traffic jam, like pulling over cars, because we have so many, in my opinion, so many violators, just from my experience. I don't know why you'd pull them all over and talk to them. And I see that audience member pointing to the roof again, or?
A nine G by Eleanor Roosevelt. They put calming lines out, from the side, white line into the roadway, about two feet or so on either side, and that'll, it sort of gives you an idea of slowing down for the cars. So you could say, talk to DOT about possibly doing that in the village in some of these crosswalks.
What do you call that?
Calming lines, I would call them. I, I, it's calming, and, like I said, down by nine G on Eleanor Roosevelt.
Is that right where the road kind of goes around the corner, does a rest of the line?
Yeah.
Yeah, those little lines.
Yeah.
So it helps slow the traffic down, for pedestrians.
Need to give them more warning that something's coming up.
Yeah.
So my suggestion would be that we prep up some wording to set a public hearing for the October meeting, and I'll put forward something as far as a motion that the village of Red Oak apply for the two thousand and fifteen block grant to include completion of the sidewalk on the west side of Route nine near the Loner Mat, the, whatever work we can factor in the firehouse lane to make the firehouse and parking more ADA accessible. And then, lastly, if we have some option to do something with signage, or striping, or something to better enforce or illustrate the presence of the existing crosswalks on Route nine, that'd be a, what I'm trying to do is prep us, so we set the public hearing. Those would be the three major factors we would submit to the block grant folks. But in the interim, we'll have to get some pricing and rough idea, because Jay always helps us with the actual paperwork filing. We have to get some hardened engineering, but not the full final type engineering and so on. And that'd be, put that forth in form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? We kind of discussed it before we defined it. All in favor of doing that?
Aye.
So we'll do the public hearing at seven o'clock, and maybe it'll segue into something that's not on the agenda. Jen, our calendar may have been, has realized that in October, Columbus Day is actually the second Monday. So I would prefer that we meet the first Monday. Today is September eighth, so it's not like it's only three weeks away. It seems it's a sequence enough. And what'd we say that is, October?
Sixth.
Six?
Sixth.
Yeah. So therefore, the public hearing, instead of being, we don't work and we don't meet on Columbus Day, the staff has off, so. So as a secondary motion, while I'm thinking about it, want to shift our meeting to October sixth, and we put a public hearing up front on block grant two thousand and fifteen for seven PM. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so I guess we got through block grant. Red Oak Fire Department contract, just thought I'd introduce something for your thought and prusal, for some ideas. We don't necessarily have to decide something here, but like you know, we did work with them, and we're working on the no net increase for the next contract term, but they came back with a request, and they're looking to see if the village would be interested in plowing their lot over the winter. The issue being that Red Oak Fire Company is not a part of the village of Red Oak, it's a separate, distinct corporation. We don't oversee them with any board placement or any direct authority over them, it's, they are truly and separately their own entity. So they're looking to get their quote for, for snow plowing. In the past, we had a little run-in with, they were getting their lot plowed by us, but there was no financial relationship. It was being done where the village was fronting the cost, and there was no compensation in the, in the contract that could be discerned. So I wanted the board to think about that. The issue I have, though, is our highway foreman sits as a board director's member, as far as I know, on the fire department. So normally I would ask him to give us some idea of what a bid value would be to put in as a bid, and then we could decide if we want to do it. But I just wanted to put in your heads, A, do we want to do it, and B, should we do it? But the most important thing is, is if it happens, it's got to be defined and contractually listed and values put on it. Whereas, they're not looking to make it as part of the current contract, which it came up post-contract negotiation. And it's just something to think about, and we could talk about it later. I have item number four, hydrant flushing. I think that just came up more today than anything. We're getting near the time of the year where we should do it before it gets too cold out. And Brent, you have the most info on that, I think. Were you talking to Dan today about it, or?
Yeah, we're just trying to schedule time, so I'd try and be, probably the end of September, beginning of October.
What we're doing, too, is try and time it out. A for Panda to hear it tonight, and then B, Cindy will get it in the newsletter, which goes out shortly, right?
Yeah, I'll also put it in paper.
Yeah, so. For those, what we're doing is, we're on the hunt for leaking system, leaking lines in our mains. And this past week, we were out checking some mains and so forth, and some residents called in, they had some low pressure, more on the Maiseland roadside of the world. We're opening hydrants and testing, listening and things in that quadrant, so it's interesting to me how just opening one hydrant, people can sense it that quickly, but, but that's nothing to do with flushing, and it's just the one hydrant location that had an impact that we didn't realize would hit that hard in another area, but, but we will get the notice out for the regular flushing, because that's more inclined to, you could see some changes in your water color, and we'll put the proper wording in about that. So, got that. Dutchess County Electric Cooperative bid. I handed out something, we got it transmittal, it came to us September fifth, which is what, Friday, I guess. In the spirit of shared services, some of us have met Chris Barclay, he's director of County Dutchess Central Services. They've helped us when we moved some of our surplus equipment, we used their auction facility, and they offer different things where we can purchase on their mass purchasing power. This has an interesting wrinkle, and Steve, it just came to all of us, so I think I might forward it digitally Friday when I got it, because I know it's short-term. What I did in my comments, I said, you know, no comments back, please, here's some facts that we need for Monday, the better if they could all read it as a board. But I printed up copies again, just so everybody had it in front of them. Essentially, the county is looking to get bids for themselves through something called a rural electrical energy supply, and they're inviting municipalities, meaning us and towns and so forth in the county, to also participate in this cooperative bid. County will require individual contracts with associated individual building to be executed with Energy Services Company for the electric supply service to be provided to each participant in the RFP. So what they're doing, the county and the community college are applying no matter what, and they're offering us to come in if we want. It looks like they're setting up two options. There could be an aggregate cost, or then the munis could also get their own separate bids, and we do it, we don't, we're not locked into it or forced to do it. They attached a form where they need us to type in or write in all of our Central Hudson account numbers, but really, in this case, right now the village of Red Oak uses Central Hudson, but also, it's called MEGA, it's an energy cooperative with, right now Hess Energy has the contract. But I think it's worth shopping it and see what.
Just a question, just a clarification. On page one, the, in the specification, section, section two point one.
What are you looking at there, Brent?
This is the Dutchess County, Dutchess Community College of New York, has for bids, RFP, or regenerative energy service. It's the technical staff outside of random for the county. Page one, section two, paragraph two point one.
Okay.
And this, I have to finish from the, my own sense of premises, but it says, to quote the paragraph, "Within Zone G of the N-line ISO for the Central Hudson franchise, the County of Dutchess, the Dutchess Community College have demand and non-demand meters. These meters are spread throughout the county with the purportions of electric flow being concentrated along around nine corridor stretch from Rhinebeck in the northern part of the county down to Fisk on the southern part of the county." Does this, is this only applicable to that Zone G, or does it encompass the entire, all the way up to northern Dutchess up to Tivoli, or does it stop at Rhinebeck?
Well, the cover letter is addressed to all municipal officials. I think what they're talking about there is, the county has, they have demand and non-demand meters, which that's when you have humongous, like I get, the demand and non-demand is when you have large facilities where the meters are customized to, to deal with the power, power requirement. When I look at the.
Are you in Zone G, though? I mean, it said, I did see the map.
Yeah, I don't see a map in there, but when you read the text, it says, "Each municipality and a community college will individually accept or reject bids with individual contracts being created for each entity. For the bids received, there are two acceptance options: either all munis plus the community college accept an aggregated bid price, or that each entity accepts its individual bid price." It's worded to me like we would have, we're included, we, we got addressed, and we got sent it. I think the RF, the bid specifications are hugely complex, even for the bidders to deal with. What they're asking us is just to give them our account numbers. They're asking us two options, no, we do not wish to participate, or yes, we wish to, and if yes, we have to give account numbers. The catch is, we got it on the fifth, and it's due with the account numbers on before September twelfth, that's why I sent it out there, everybody. What I see, Brent, is if we have our staff list the account numbers between now and Friday, I guess, whenever the twelfth is, we can get it off to shared services county level and see what we get back.
Sure.
And.
So it's just potential to save money, we don't have to participate if we find something that we don't like in there.
Right.
Or if we're not covered under it.
Pardon me?
Or if we're not covered.
Well, like I said, the.
I know what the cover letter said, but it's, I just, again, the clarification and.
Yeah, it says, "The goal of the county is to reduce its overall electric energy supply and to create added financial benefit for the county. With the bids, the county will test the marketplace to determine whether a fixed-price bid contract will hold the potential to reduce supply charges below those that will be offered by Central Hudson." I think that spec is just telling them that they have demand and non-demand meters out there that the bidder should be aware of. We don't have any, we just have regular meters here, so. But my thought would be, I see, I think we should participate and move forward, and it'd just be some work by the staff. And it looks like the return date on the, if I read somewhere, I think the bidder, the bidders have until September thirtieth, so it's short-term, we'll know pretty quickly see on that one page with the exhibit where you type in account numbers, it says.
It won't take long.
Bid close date, September thirtieth. And anyway, I would make a motion that we check the yes box and fill in our account numbers, and then we can look at it internally, and if we need somebody to help us from the outside, we could do that, meaning an engineer or something, but we do know what we spend, and if we could buy the power a little cheaper, it'd be good. Is there a second on that?
So.
Any more discussion, Brent?
Yes, this will cover, like, the streetlights and.
I don't think streetlights, only because streetlights aren't tariffed.
So this will cover our residents?
Yes, that's, that's what I'm assuming, that it's residential primarily, or businesses and things like that.
Well.
The streetlights, the streetlights are covered by tariff.
So that it's not covered?
And/or, and their own by Central Hudson.
Yeah, but I think there's a misperception down this, and this would not be for our residents to get into the cooperative, it would be for our municipal consumption, our.
So like the well field, the village building, and having, right, yeah. There's these streetlights and.
Right, yeah.
That would be good.
What about the streetlights we own, Abraham's Park and Memorial Park?
Yeah, that would be, if they're not on tariff, they'd be, we'd get a benefit.
Okay.
And then, so there's a motion, a second, some discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Brent, did you go? He's very quiet tonight. Very quiet.
Usually.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, I guess the next one is kind of a big one here, traffic light, Route one ninety-nine, Route nine, dash walk signal. I know some people in the audience, I don't know, will probably take some input in a minute, but the board will talk first, and then, we had, again, it was, anybody who lives around here knows, there's an issue on the Route nine, one ninety-nine traffic interface. Just to set the stage, one can go to a website, New York DOT Average Annual Daily Traffic, it's an interesting site, it gives the count of cars that go on Route nine south of the light, north of the light, and then on one ninety-nine east and west of the light. The figures add up to about fourteen thousand cars a day go through that, under that traffic light. We, or we joke sometimes, I guess, we don't know where they're all going, it's not like we have a factory or a huge employer that pulls that many cars. And it seems somehow it does cycle a little, but the school time when it gets busier, but even twenty afternoon, one thirty, it'll be backed up for no apparent reason when people should be working, different things. And we have, quite frankly, met with DOT numerous times over the years, trying to see if there's a problem with the technology, with the sensors, with whatever. And just to set the stage further, it is a high-tech light where there are sensors in the road, it has computer circuit boards in a unit on the one pole there that gets fed data, and the walk signal does interfere with the data and start new cycles, and we've been going back and forth with DOT, and recently, again, it's come to the forefront, and I'll set the stage, and Brent, and whoever wants to jump in, too. We do know, we, our whole effort has been to build sidewalks and get people walking, and we see the new retail and restaurant scene developing, we see the Bard students come back, but then on the same hand, we don't see the cars yielding down the street to the crosswalks. Is there a frustration factor at the light that people have just said, hey, I'm through dealing with Red Oak, I'm going to burn through every other crosswalk I have to see that's not got a traffic light on it? Is there some of that? Is the New York driver not being trained at the sign that was, you have to yield to pedestrians in your side of the crosswalk, they don't get that? And then last thing, what we're doing on the side streets, if you heard Brent talking there with the Water Phase Two project, we're going to be tearing up a lot of garden, Prince Church, these side streets in this quadrant, which are one of the bailout quadrants. So we're going to actually have more traffic online being frustrated and pushed somewhere, probably down Fisk, or who knows, you know, I hear they go up Echo Valley, there's all kinds of bypasses, but. And quite frankly, on my street, gave some tacit approval, it's just the people cutting through that really don't belong on the street are a problem, it's, they're, they don't live there, they're not going to the church or the school for some community basis, they're just cutting through the neighborhood and.
And going fast.
Yeah, and they don't, yeah, they just, for some reason, you know, we're trying to, David, out in the audience, use the traffic, traffic calming concept, we've been trying to push that forever. And in this tear-up phase, we're also looking at trying to design in, and Brent's working with our engineers and different agencies, some pedestrian-friendly stuff on our side streets, and therefore, we don't want everybody bailing out and just coming down the side streets, so it takes, we have this pressure valve, pressure relief valve now, we're going to lose that, we're going to get more traffic, and the option leads us towards a certain decision that DOT tells us, the only way you can rectify the odd delays up here is to go to a more urban setting of, you only block, you can cross parallel with traffic on the walk signal, and you cross parallel again, which, when you think of this rule in most populated areas, you know, it's, we explored, can you shorten the time cycle of the four-way block now? But I think I might let Brent, Brent put a letter together and put a lot of thought into it, too, and the board's been consulted and working on it, too, but they will lead a little bit and we'll, you know, just talk about that.
Which is basically, I think, you know, with all the concerns that I've had, or that I had mentioned, and since the light's been installed, and since more traffic has been going through, and also since that we're going to probably realize more traffic with the new T and D, the neighborhood being built down south of us is implemented, we are. We have more barge students, the introduction of the barge shuttle to the neighborhoods we're seeing a lot more traffic on Church Street, Frady Street, Garden Street, but also Firehouse Lane going down Thompson, Little House Street, um, just to bypass the light. These are already narrow roads with few sidewalks in them, so these roads are shared by pedestrians. You know, Marvin, Mr. Allens, seniors with walkers are on these streets sharing it with theirs. So luckily, we've seen no town towers happen, but a lot of conflict and potential conflict happening with cars and that. And so we are looking at the traffic signal, which has been actually included. Remediation what's currently there in the walk bike Duchess, um, study for short term consensus. And basically what they're asking for as well, and this is something that the DOT has reviewed. But changing the light on Route 9, 199, single timing to incorporate standard pedestrian crossing where people cross parallel with the traffic. And what we're asking for also is a, um, a leading pedestrian interval that should be added to give pedestrians a head start to cross at the intersection before parallel vehicle, vehicle traffic begins and also as we have now, right turn on red restrictions should stay there to further reduce the contrast between vehicles and pedestrians. We know it's a good thing when there's a lot of traffic and/or pedestrians at the same time on that intersection. Most of the time during the day, there's less, the button stops, uh, traffic for a minimum of 20 seconds, plus whatever wait time is available there, so. And then it's not timed, I don't think, succinctly for both equal time travel from on Route 199 to Route 9. So there's a lot of issues there. And so again, based on the bike walk Duchess plan, Duchess County planning, and the Poughkeepsie Duchess County Transportation Council are endorsing their recommendation to change the traffic signal at the full point.
Sorry, Brent was in communication with DOT and he developed a letter and you can tell from Brent's reports, he's very, very detailed and technical oriented, which is great. We have a letter and then my communication with DOT was that they need a supporting resolution from the Village of Red Hook. Essentially where we're, we've come to and we'll talk about it and vote on it tonight is we, we want to suggest to DOT that the four-way block is no longer working. It's, um, we want to go to that system where it blocks one direction of travel, so you have to cross parallel with traffic, but with, we still have a walk signal and a walk button and a wa, everything would be there. And we, like I said, it's a little tough because we are so pedestrian centric as far as all the work we do is to try to promote pedestrians and their safety and that's primed us. But the other hand, it seems like it's off putting our efforts because the cars aren't waiting for the other crosswalks. And then on the side streets, there's more traffic where pedestrians are walking dogs, walking, like Brent said, walking with strollers. And even though we've built sidewalks on some of our more major, like West Market and Park and Linden and different places, we just can't build them on all these little side streets right now. So we're trying to get a little pressure off those streets. And again, my position is, in particular with this construction project coming up next summer, we want to build back better pedestrian safety on the back quadrant here, but it's gonna be worse before it gets better. And so long story short, we'd like to recommend that the state take that action. So Brent, did he prepare a letter and then we, I have a resolution here. As Jonah, the judge, said, there's a lot of wherashes in resolutions. I'll put them out there just so the board can hear them. I think everybody has a copy, right? The first one, the Village of Red Hook is located along New York State Highway Route 9 and New York State Highway 199. And this always raises this concept, um, it's problematic for villages where what they call main street is a state highway. We really don't have much control of the state highways as far as plowing, maintenance, different things. And it's great in one way, but then again, we get, we're working with a infrastructure that we can't really control. So we're stating, okay, it's your highway, state of New York. The next whereas DOT owns and controls the traffic lights, walk signals and related programming mechanisms at the intersection, which is true. We don't control that. Whereas traffic flow, vehicle access and pedestrian access are important considerations for the health and safety of our residents and businesses. And whereas traffic volume creates long delays and increasing idling traffic noted at the intersection as a result of four lane stop for walk signals. And whereas action to improve traction, traffic flow and its impact on smart growth, climate change is needed by government, business and communities. See supporting letter. So what I'm referencing there is Brent's long letter. Whereas New York DOT is willing and able to modify the pedestrian walk sequences at the intersection with their, with the approval and authority of the Village of Red Hook. And whereas modification to change the walk signal from a full four lane stop to a one highway stop would promote less traffic tie-up at the light and maintain pedestrian access. And whereas community interests and businesses stand to benefit if safe and efficient traffic flows promoted. Whereas community members are looking for action to both improve traffic flow and pedestrian access as well as reducing noise and emissions from stationary vehicles. Now therefore be resolved, the Village of Red Hook will authorize and instruct the New York State DOT to remove the all lanes blocked walk signal sequence and change the walk sequence to allow a manual push button triggering of one roadway slash state highway, both directions at a time. New York State DOT will be authorized to sign and mark the controls of crosswalks as needed to advise pedestrians of the change. There's a little awkward wording in, um, trying to find in the one whereas, three, three up-
Three run from the law.
Yeah. We want to change the signal from a four lane stop to a one highway stop. One highway, I'm not sure what we went there. We're trying to say one and I would be stopped and then you could cross.
It'll stop two ways of traffic.
And two lanes-
East west, north, east, north, south?
Pardon me?
East west, north, south?
Yeah.
Instead of one, one highway stop, it'll be a two, two directional stop. Like you said, either north, south or east west, so it'll be like a typical, topical.
Yeah, but I, I don't think two-way works either because that might imply two highways are stopped. I'm trying to say one, one state highway is stopped, which would be 199 or 9. Jay, have any suggestion there or is-
Cross parallel with traffic.
To, to allow crossing parallel to traffic.
Allow pedestrians to cross parallel with true traffic.
Jay is our engineer and wordsmith. Four lane stop to allow, let's see, to change the walkway from a full four lane stop to allow a highway stop that would allow crossing parallel to traffic. Was that in the audience?
Only.
Then in the therefore paragraph, um, New York DOT, let's see. Remove all lanes blocked walk signal sequence and change the walk sequence to allow manual push button triggering. We could put an area in, allow, again, to allow crossing parallel to traffic only. Just kind of repeat that down there. Okay. So I've read it. Is there a second?
Second.
I think so. Normally, yeah, we'll take, I see some people that might be here for this issue. First the board, anybody have any more thought from the board?
No, I think it's a long time coming.
Okay. Do you have, I see some people out there. You can say your name and that's it.
I'm Cheryl Griffith. And I live in the town, actually, not the village, but of course I go to the library. There's another problem at that intersection besides the four-way walk signal. And that is people turning left. So I suppose there isn't enough room. At least on 199, there's probably not enough room for a problem with turning. Seems to be that on 9, there might be. But there are an enormous number of people who wait to make their left turn either from the center of the lane or even to the right of the center. If they would go all the way to the center, then there's room for the cars going straight or turning right to get by. But one or two people waiting to turn left in the middle of the lane can, you know, force the rest of the, of the line of cars to sit through two, two signals. So I'm wondering, even if there isn't room for a left, probably long enough left turn lane, is there any way to mark the lane to encourage people to get over?
Well, I guess we take it as an advice, but advisement, but the, the one issue, like you said, 199 is incredibly narrow in general. And then, you know, we do restrict parking near corners of 199. But the problem is, um, we have to balance, you know, if you're doing, I'm not a traffic engineer, but if you're changing it to parallel crossing, um, you might not, if you have a lot of traffic trying to turn left, I'm not sure of how that will affect it. It's a, because the pedestrian crossing will have right of way, so people turning left, um-
And then you can block people turning left and right.
Yeah, so it's, um, and, uh-
I mean, I think it's the best solution on the whole, but I just wish that something, that I would maybe talk to traffic engineers, Doug, use any way of marking the road.
If, if I'm not mistaken, I think the past conversation with the DOT is that, that I think they've stated that, that they have no intent for that to be a left turn or a straight. And they're not interested in doing anything to demarcate anything like that. They don't want to step up to it.
Well, you do have some turn arrows on some of the lanes, but there's just no room to warehouse the cars in the line or even on route.
Maybe it could even just be a public education campaign like you're trying to do with your stopping for the crosswalks. People would just be a little more considerate of where they are when they're waiting to turn left and whether they're like, whether they're blocking anyone else from getting by.
I, I get you and the one part is, which we wouldn't want to do is if you took away parking further into each of the corners, then that's counterproductive because then the merchants wouldn't have, you know, there's a certain number of spaces that are in front of their stores. And we've thought about that too, as far as backing it off a little bit, but.
Yeah, well, it's just a thought.
It's like, it's such essentially-
I have another idea about parking. I don't know if this is the time to say it or not.
Sure, go ahead.
I, I just had a suggestion. I don't know how much, how expensive this is, but maybe you could put it in your block grant to paint parking places on, at least in certain places in the town. Because for instance, in, in front of the post office, I think there's room for maybe three cars. And in front of the library, there's room even for four cars. But people park half a car length from one end or the other, so they take away a space. And I was at the hardware store the other day. They had it all blocked off because they were expecting a truck, which I don't, I knew they have to do that. But then there are two drivers and in between those go through two cars and there was a truck parked right in the middle of it. So there was only room for one.
That's a good point. It would like to be marked.
Is it be painted at one corner?
I would like Rhinebeck to do this too, but I'm thinking Red Hook, set that as an example.
That's a good point because it sort of directs the parking spot so you can get more in there and get them parked properly.
Makes people think about it.
Yeah.
So I know we have signs that sometimes aren't followed either, you know, no parking from here to corner and-
Yeah.
And that's to allow for greater visibility for maybe to turn onto a major highway and so I think there's a lot of enforcement and public education and that kind of thing that has, you know, we have, we have to deal with what we're kind of dealt with with the narrow roads and I mean, they've already wiped 199.
And I think the parking spaces, painted parking spaces might help. They might, they'd magnetize, you know, half a dozen more places to park in the town.
In the village?
In the village.
Yeah. People, he says that it's a common misnomer, like people reference the town. I think even one of the newspaper stories called, talks about the town, but they really mean the village, which we don't like.
Sorry.
But that's a good suggestion. I'll, I'll call the DOT and ask if, just inquire about painting, you know, parking. I guess it would be, make their lives to the curb, right? So they should get a demarcation of-
Yes.
Where to stop and start. Maybe that would help us with, because I even see people, probably, you know, in the space where our signs for the crosswalks are.
Yeah.
No parking from here to a certain distance from the crosswalk.
Well, you would make it clear where the, some, some places make a whole square around the parking place. And some towns or cities just make a little tee like out of, marking the outside corners, which would be cheaper, I suppose.
In, in a conversation that I had, this hasn't been recently, maybe several years, that particular question came up on, on, on a major thoroughfare like this. And one of their comments was that when you delineate the parking places, it keeps people from pulling in and encourages parallel parking, which then in turn slows traffic up. So they're kind of like 50/50. If you have a car here and a car here and there's one space in the middle, you can't pull in. You have to do a parallel park. And so the DOT engineers are going, oh, I don't know whether I want to encourage that, you know, so.
Yeah, but there's lots of times when you have to parallel park anyway, so, you know.
Well, we could do, I think, what's it?
We can ask it.
Yeah, it's a state highway. We're a little bit restricted on just going and marking, but then there's, we have some books, what's it called, guerrilla urbanism, where you, uh, do something first and ask later, you know. We could put an artist on it or something and then, uh, but that is the funny part, like I was introducing the topic, it's state highway. So we do have, like even when we put no parking or two hour parking, we have to tell them what we're doing and get their approvals, so.
There's their signs and then we have to subscribe to the Navy Uniform Product Medical Devices, Highway Administration. There's books, books that stop us there. It's a fun chore, but we'll, we'll look into it.
What I would do, so we read the motion. I think we're in discussion phase. We inserted some public comment.
I have a question. Resolution 18?
18?
Yes.
I think she has it on the right somewhere.
Is it that?
It does.
19.
Thank you.
So it is past 17, the other one, right?
No, 17 was-
Jones was 17.
No, seven, Jones was 17 and-
Changing the date?
18 was the block grant.
Okay. So anyway, resolution 19. Any other discussion from the board? All in favor of the resolution letter process?
With revisions.
Pardon me?
With revisions or what?
Yeah, with those. Thank you, Brent. Aye.
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 Thank you. So what did?
Steve, could you sign this letter, please?
While we're in the miscellaneous street motion mode, um, for Hardscrabble Day, we historically use the village parking lot. We closed Prince Street and then we generally close church from, uh, the Prince to Route 199 area.
We don't need to close church. That's, we closed church on, yeah, we closed church on Apple Blossom, not on Hardscrabble.
Depends what the Methodist church is up to. But just to be formal, I'd like a resolution that we can close Prince and of course we'll have a parade that'll come down Phillips to Fraly and up 9, the normal parade route and so forth. Is there a second to close the appropriate streets for Hardscrabble Day?
Second.
No. Anybody, discussion or anything? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Another thing, uh, at one of our meetings, I think it might've been the newspaper story, um, we were talking about the senior water rate and the corrections we had to make to that with regard to, um, taking it from $59 down to $53. I think one of the stories in the paper especially used the generic term senior rate, but I wanted to repeat something that came up maybe six months ago. And Cindy can help with this, but the senior rate is not just based on age in the Village of Red Hook. It's, um, I think the misperception was that once you hit a certain age, you get a senior water rate, but it's something where you have to, I go through this filing.
You have to qualify. You have to submit your income to the tax assessor. And if you qualify for the village tax reduction, which is- And if you qualify for the village tax reduction, which is based on income, it's leveled by percentage, then you can apply for water, qualify for water rate.
So, we just want to be clear on that with.
It's age and income or just income?
Well, you have to be a senior citizen and it's based on income.
So, sixty-three and over?
Yes.
Plus income quality?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so just want to get that on the record. And then we did have, let's see, I wanted to go to executive session for personnel and police collective bargaining discussion, but in the interim, we, any other general business from the board? If not, we would open to public comment.
I just wanted to know something. When you come down nine to the light, you get an arrow where people can.
Going north.
Right? When you're going north.
Yeah.
But you don't get that when you're coming east-west, right? And would that help? I mean, that could, because that would help with maybe stop people from turning the way she was, but I don't know if you.
We can ask the DOT, but Route 199 is so narrow that I don't know how you could get, you know, nine northbound is a little bit more room. But, and.
I mean, the stands now coming south around, like people use parking in front of the drive stores and have a right turn lane. You see two lanes of traffic and that's clearly not a right turn lane or a through traffic lane. That's what people do to try to get the left turn.
I find it worse when you're coming 199 to the village to make, if people want to make left turns, I think that's.
Yeah.
It takes forever. I mean, it's true, people just wait and wait. They don't go around.
There's no, not, they don't have room.
And there's no, so I'm wondering if you had an arrow on the light like you do going north with that? I don't know how it works on the other side.
If you're in single line, you have an arrow turning. I don't know how many cars will get through, besides the first one in the queue.
Well, you have it on going north, right? But there's a red light, a green light, and then at one point, there's an arrow, green arrow, that like a lap that stops the cars coming this way, allows you to turn left to go onto 199, right?
You're right, but it's.
You couldn't do that in that other, you know, coming into the village on 199.
I don't know where you put the cars. I mean, it's a curb and I don't really know where to go around because they have that nice bulb out, there's a certain deliberate bulb out on those four corners already. But we'll talk to the DOT when we turn this in. I saw Mr. Beekman.
Can you really break down the incident and B and P reports from town?
Yeah, let's see.
What's the public comment on it?
I have, let's see, Patrick read it.
The incident report, I'm repeating, he break, break it down.
Yeah, incidents, it was gross, two hundred and twenty-two. It broke out, Village of Red Hook, one twenty-six, Town of Red Hook, ninety-one, ninety-one, Village of Tibbely, five. And then UTTs, that's the traffic tickets, eighty-three. The breakdown was forty-one in the Village of Red Hook, two parking tickets, and then forty-two Town of Red Hook. And when he was talking about the program, the DWI program on Labor Day weekend, I was looking because I saw that large number and as far as arrests. And in depth of the report, it looks like there were two DWIs in the village.
Oh, I need, was this the number of arrests? I hear thirty-two, it was broken off to twelve and twenty.
Mr. Pearson?
Yes, I have a few things to ask.
Speak up a little bit.
Rhinebeck doesn't seem to have as much of a problem with their, with their light in center of town as we do. Do they have less time on, on their, why would they have less time for the pedestrian four-way stop there than ours? I think I read that somewhere.
I don't know the answer to the why, but we did look at it and it is quicker sequence. And I looked also at that average daily traffic count to see, is it just less traffic there? It's a little bit less, but not much. And then.
We have more than Rhinebeck? That's crazy.
And then, but the three oh eight, it doesn't seem like there's, I don't know the algorithm or the math, but the three oh eight side, not much happens on a riverside of three oh eight. It kind of, it's like action on three sides. We have action on all four sides here. It's like, so somehow that.
You got a lot more truck traffic than Red Hook.
Yeah. Yeah, for some reason that's true too. It's, I think they deadhead, they're coming free down nine.
If they have less traffic, why would you ever put more time for pedestrians?
Yeah.
In Red Hook?
Don't know.
I think their, their signals, ten-second signals.
Ten-second what? We should be ten-second at the very least if they don't go for a, a parallel stop, a, a parallel crossing.
I don't know how they figured that, if it's, if it's the amount of traffic, if they make it longer, that seems to be the case.
I would think there's more pedestrians in Rhinebeck than Red Hook.
Well, there are times, to be fair, when I've been in Rhinebeck and I'm stuck down by the VFW northbound and by Rugies, it's, it's, it happens, it's not. I think personally, I think it's a little more of a wide panorama, so you don't feel as psychologically trapped. It's like, you look, it's like a different thing, whereas 199, you're kind of like, like she was saying, people try to turn left, you can't, you get frustrated and it's, it makes the whole thing. And then one of our big concerns, then that bleeds over into, once the truck, the car driver gets free of the stress, they don't want to wait for anybody and hurts. I still, we're always amazed, you know, I took my vacation in Massachusetts and it's amazing how cars, they stop so quickly for you. Like, it's really nice and somehow we have to convey that, you know, that's I think what you were suggesting, somehow like, hey, you know, the pedestrians out in the rain, the cold, the heat, whatever it is, you're in your car, what's it take you? Two seconds to let them cross in front of you, meaning on the non-regulated crosswalks?
What about the car behind you?
Well, that's the thing, in Massachus, I don't know how they, I don't know how they have so many, they don't have that many rear-end collisions in Massachusetts because even when I'm there as an interstate driver, I'm like, whoa, the guy's in front of you stopping because he sees somebody we just don't see and they get on it. You were just in Cape Cod, you noticed that? It's like.
Absolutely, stop the bicycles and pedestrians.
And the crosswalks better painted, but I remember the.
Same, the, same, I mean, they, they don't even, many of the crosswalks on the Cape are not the straight, it's just two lines, just two lines. And there will be, in Barnstable, went through and within five hundred feet, there were three crosswalks.
Do the pedestrians live around down there?
Pardon?
Do pedestrians look for ways? Will they do it like here, just walk out?
They just walk out, but the thing is, it seems that the, the people driving are so attuned, I mean, it's, if somebody looks like they're going to walk into the street, everybody stops. It's just, it's very interesting.
But anyway, so we'll move forward with that. Let's, I think we hit the general business, the public comment. Anybody else?
Could I say one, two more?
Two more, go ahead.
I've been, I walk my dog at night and I know you have put in your newsletter about no bikes on the sidewalks.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I see a continual problem with that. And I've, just a little week ago, I almost had somebody run me over while I'm walking the sidewalks and.
Was it me, was it?
No, no. But to reiterate that, every, every quarter in the newsletter would be great.
Well, it's funny because all of a sudden I've noticed it and it seems like it's not kids, it's adults and not, it's, and, yeah, I don't know if they read our newsletter. I have a feeling it might be tenants at one of the houses down here and, but we could tell our cops too because it is, they're, they're a little bit, they're not quite concentrating either when they're, the ones I've come across.
I think police should get some warnings for it.
Yeah.
Have some understanding about the issue. And one more thing, with the brush pickup on Mondays, the first and third Mondays, I, I seem to see people putting brush out anytime they want. So, it'd be good to reiterate that, that it's just the first and third Mondays, just beforehand, not anytime you want.
I could put it in the newsletter again.
That's when, that's when they pick it up, is the first and third. I didn't know.
And they should, and they should put it out shortly before that, not two weeks before.
And I agree, we could put, it's our preference or, like in my yard, if I cut something, I'll put it where it's not visible and I'll drag it out today, you know, but it's, I think that's the way it's designed to be. We don't want to be looking at it for two weeks and then, good point. All right, what I would do is, we do want to go to executive session. I'll announce why in a moment, but we'll come back out and then our routine course of business is, I don't see any more business being transacted, it'll likely be, I'll make a motion to pay our bills and then we'll accept Kowalczek's motion to adjourn, but we'll probably got fifteen minutes or something, we'll talk a few things. So, I would entertain a motion, board, to go into executive session, executive session for two reasons, one, for personnel issues, and then secondly, to discuss police collective bargains.
Some move.
Is there a second? All in favor? We'll be back. Okay, the board is re-seated after an executive session. Is there a motion to re-enter regular session?
Some move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And as we stated before we went out, we were talking about personnel and collective bargaining. There'll be no votes or anything made here on that, those issues. We need a motion to pay bills after audit?
Some move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Thank you, and I think we're done for the night. Mr. Brent, would you like to make the appropriate?
Absolutely. I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Good night.
Good night.